Yep, I have it. Let me pull it up real quick. I move that the Albemarle County Public School Board go into a closed meeting as authorized by the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Section 2.2-3711A of the Code of Virginia, under subsection one, for the discussion consideration in our interviews of prospective candidates for employment and the assignment appointment promotion performance to motion salaries disciplining or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body.
Second.
Okay, move by Ms. Carlson, second by Ms. Lee, that we go into closed session. Ms. Johnston, could you give us a quick roll call vote on that?
Dr. Alcarro.
Yes.
Ms. Lee.
Yes.
Ms. Osborne.
Yes.
Ms. Carlson.
Yes.
Mr. Oberg.
Yes.
Dr. Acuff.
Yes.
Mr. Page.
Yes.
All right, so we will convene in the closed session. See you there.
There's gotta be an easier way to toggle in and out of meetings. I mean, I just don't know what it is, but...
It has to be.
I actually kind of like it because I was in a different meeting this past weekend and accidentally was in someone else's closed session. They had to kick me out. And so, I really prefer this method.
Of intentionally having to figure it out each time, yes.
Okay, it is about 6:32, so I called this January, I mean, January, June 10th meeting of the Albemarle County School Board to order. Ms. Carlson, do you have a motion from the closed session?
Yes, sir. I move that the board certified by recorded vote that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion authorizing the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting.
Second. Okay, moved by Ms. Carlson, second by Ms. Alcarro, that everything that was discussed in the closed session was with the motion had identified that would be discussed. Ms. Johnston, could you call the roll, please, on that motion?
Ms. Lee.
Yes.
Ms. Osborne.
Yes.
Ms. Carlson.
Yes.
Mr. Oberg.
Yes.
Dr. Acuff.
Yes.
Mr. Alcarro.
Yes.
Mr. Page.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion carries, all right. So we'll have a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. Now, for, since we are still under some restrictions according to the state, minutes must include this each time. The minutes of this meeting should reflect that this meeting is being held electronically pursuant to Virginia State law and Albemarle County ordinance, because the COVID-19 pandemic makes it impracticable and unsafe to assemble a quorum physically in a single location. The meeting is being communicated to the public electronically through Zoom and streamed live on the Albemarle County Public Schools website, and public comment may be offered through the Zoom waiting room feature in accordance with the school board's protocol or by written submission. And now to introduce our board members, Dr. Kate Acuff.
Kate Acuff, representing the Jack Jewett District.
Mr. Jono Alcarro.
Jono Alcarro, at large.
Ms. Katrina Carlson.
Katrina Carlson, Rio District.
Ms. Judy Lee.
Judy Lee, Ryvanna District.
Mr. Dave Oberg.
Dave Oberg, Whitehall Magisterial District.
Ms. Ellen Osborne.
Ellen Osborne, Scottsville District.
All right, I'm Graham Page, Samuel Miller District. And student reps, I don't see them, but I hope they are both here. Leila Bonds.
She's running a little late, she'll be here shortly.
Okay, and Maya Shanner. This is Maya's first meeting. And so, Maya, are you here?
Yes, I'm here.
Yeah, could you give us a brief rundown on who you are and your school, et cetera?
I was a student at Murray. I recently graduated. Yeah, it's nice to be here.
We are glad to have you. And I think, didn't you have a pretty great honor that you received upon graduation last week?
Yes, I received the, I was one of the recipients of the Emily Quirk Scholarship.
Okay.
Congratulations, Mia.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Mia. Right. All right, moving right along, we need now a motion for the approval of our agenda for tonight.
I move that we approve the agenda.
Second.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Alcarro, second by Ms. Lee, that the agenda be approved. Any discussion on that motion? If not, Ms. Johnston.
Ms. Osborne.
Yes.
Ms. Carlson.
Yes.
Mr. Oberg.
Yes.
Dr. Acuff.
Yes.
Mr. Alcarro.
Yes.
Ms. Lee.
Yes.
Mr. Page.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, and we also need a motion on the approval of the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, move by Mr. Alcarro, second by Dr. Acuff, that we approve this consent agenda that's outlined. Any discussion on that motion?
I just have one, one point that I'd like to ask a question on, it don't need to be pulled, and it has to do with the fees. I don't have the agenda right in front of me. Graduation fees, I just want to make sure that those are covered if somebody is not able to afford them.
Yes, those are covered.
Okay, that's all I need, thank you.
I actually had that question on other fees as well. I know the AP fee is covered, correct?
That's correct.
If it needs to be. Are there any others that are covered possibly?
All, all fees are covered. There's, actually, by code, we cannot require a child to pay for, you know, to pay for something if they, in order to participate. So, for example, with the athletic fees, those were adopted many years ago to essentially subsidize athletic programs during, when the recession started, and it's still in place. But if, if a child or their family cannot afford the fee, or if they qualify for free lunch or free reduced lunch, then those fees are adjusted. I do want to say too, that those, the discussions around fees, like the athletic fees, are open to discussion at any time for the board to take a look at those. We've done a lot to eliminate fees over the years, and if there's more work the board wants to do in that area, please let us know.
I actually want to clarify that the version that I looked at had an AP fee, but now this, the newest version does not, so I see that that's not a part of it.
I asked our staff to remove the AP fee as one of our fees, because the students are not required to pay a fee to be in an AP class, and we also cover expenses for exams as well. The thing, the reason I asked staff to pull that was because the fee is not paid to Albemarle County Schools for the student to take the exam, it's paid directly to the College Board. So I didn't think it was appropriate to keep that on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, if there's no other discussion, we do have the motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda. So, Ms. Johnston.
Ms. Carlson.
Yes.
Mr. Oberg.
Yes.
Dr. Acuff.
Yes.
Mr. Alcarro.
Yes.
Ms. Lee.
Yes.
Ms. Osborne.
Yes.
Mr. Page.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. All right, moving next to our Spotlight on Education. I don't have in my notes who is, introduce the Spotlight tonight.
I'm going to be doing this, thank you Chair Page. I'm delighted to introduce tonight's Spotlight on Education, because I'm the daughter of a public school science teacher who reached out to broaden his experiences in science and creatively engage students. So spotlighting one of Albemarle County's own is a real treat. In 1994, the US Congress signed into law the Albert Einstein Distinguished Educator Fellowship Act, which provided a unique opportunity for highly accomplished K-12 teachers to serve in a national setting, one of which is the Smithsonian Institute. Teachers are given access to and will leave with a national network of leaders and programs to consult. Not only will this invigorate their professional development around STEM, but it will enhance their contributions to their school division when they return home, yes. This highly prestigious national competition reached into Albemarle County this year for its newest recruit. She's Kate Cogee, who teaches science at our Charter Middle School. Kate will be working with the Smithsonian's famed Air and Space Museum, one of the most iconic, engaging, and heavily visited museums in our nation's capital. The timing is ideal for Kate. In addition to not having COVID to deal with, the museum is in the process of reimagining all 23 of its galleries and presentation spaces to, as the museum says, "to inspire a new generation of pioneers and explorers." The work, Kate says, will fit perfectly into her next year's lessons in physics. It's a dream come true for a teacher who is passionate about break-the-mold learning. As exciting as the Einstein Fellowship is, it is not the first national selection process that tapped Kate's talents. A few years ago, she joined a cohort of influencers, which included a bestselling author, a movie star, I want to know who, an astronaut, and leading business executives and scientists in the NASA outreach program. As the only educator chosen, Kate visited Vanderbrook Air Force Base for the launch of an environmental satellite. She participated in briefings on the mission, pre-launch activities, news conferences, and was a VIP for the satellite launch itself. To capture her experiences for her students, Kate set up a YouTube channel. She returned to ACPS with an impressive lesson plan that ignited her students' interest to build their own launch pad and rockets. She also strengthened their engagement to NASA's Goddard Space Flight Center, where her students met, talked with, and learned about spaceflight from the laboratory's principal scientists. As Kate prepares to begin her Einstein Fellowship, she's with us this evening to share her plans for what her goals will be and how the opening of these new frontiers of learning have and will continue to impact Kate and her students. So Kate, welcome tonight, and if you'd like to say a few words, I'm sure all, after that, all of my colleagues will have questions for you, but you have the floor.
Thank you, that was a really kind introduction, I really appreciate it. It's so nice to see you all tonight, and just thank you for the opportunity to be here. It has been just a dream come true to work with Community Lab School these past three years. It has been such an engaging and inspiring environment, and I am so excited to share everything with the Smithsonian and bring back everything I learned in this next year to Albemarle County. So, thank you for everything, for creating this program for us, these past few years have been awesome. I'll be working, as you said, with the Air and Space Museum for the next year, working specifically on their Teacher Innovator Institute. And what that program is, is it brings each year 30 STEM educators from across the country for free to the Air and Space Museum. They get to stay there for two weeks and work with each other and build these amazing projects that they get to take back home to their schools. And I would love to have a cohort of Albemarle County educators out there, too. It's an incredible program. I also would love to build projects with Albemarle County students, certainly with our school, but any school within the division. There are so many great resources there, and I'm still learning quite a bit about them. This fellowship is quite, I'm learning something new every day, but yeah, thank you so much for this opportunity and for, yeah, for inviting me here today. And I'm happy to answer any questions or anything.
You said...
I mean, congratulations, go ahead. Oh, I was just gonna say, Kate, congratulations, you know, I mean, what an honor, and, and we are truly honored to have you here with us. When you were just talking about bringing the program back after working with the other 30 educators, so that you can show it to your students, somehow, I'd love it if we could figure out a way to see that, too.
Absolutely.
I know that's going to be really, really interesting, and I sure would be interested to see it, I'm sure everybody else would, too.
Absolutely, yeah, and those educators, so those, the educators in the Teacher Innovator Institute are specifically middle, middle school teachers from around the country, and they built these projects, and it's very similar to what we've been doing at our school with doing interdisciplinary projects and kind of taking these non-traditional approaches and lending that to authentic learning, and so, we'd love to share that. As well, there's a cohort of, so we're 18 fellows within the fellowship program, and I certainly will be learning a lot about the Department of Energy and Library of Congress, so there will be a lot, a lot of fun things to bring back here that I'm excited to learn about, too.
How did you, how did you and your students interact with the Goddard Space Flight Center?
So, gosh, we, so that rocket launch was the ISAT-2 satellite. It is a satellite that tracked sea ice levels and really just any sort of elevation change on the Earth's surface. It's a really awesome program, and so after the launch, well, prior to the launch, I reached out to the principal scientist, Thorsten Markus, who helped build that whole, or put that whole project together. And so we reached out, and we actually brought all of the students to meet all of the scientists and engineers on that mission. We got to check out the clean rooms where they put together parts of the satellite. We also got to connect with folks from the GLOBE program, which is NASA's educational outreach program specifically for citizen science. And we learned about ways in which students in our school and students in other schools can actually track, um, we can actually like measure from the ground the height of certain things, and it can compare to the ISAT-2 satellite to see if those measurements are accurate. So, we did a lot of work as, along the lines of citizen science and how kids can participate in that, too.
Wow. Are there other questions?
Which movie star was in your group?
Oh, gosh, I am forgetting his name now, he's a voice actor, and I know, when you said that, I was like, I forget, I can check my data, but he's a, he was a voice actor. The program NASA Social, I highly encourage anyone to check it out, it's just a really great way to connect folks with what's happening at NASA. It, I was, I was just so fortunate to do that, but really, truly, it is such a cool program, but yeah, just all walks of life in one place, and yeah, I felt very fortunate to be there.
We're very proud of you.
We really are.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so Kate, when can, when will you know, so that we can have it on our calendar for the presentation that would be presented to people in the county or other places, so that we could have it also for us?
Oh, for the Teacher Innovator?
What's the date to hold?
Oh, gosh, like just with, as far as the institute with the Smithsonian, or, oh, gosh, I still have to learn, I haven't even started my job there yet, so, I'll be, so this, not this weekend, but next weekend, I'm actually going to be kind of taking on a volunteer role with the Smithsonian and taking part in this year's Teacher Innovator Institute. So, that will involve this current cohort of teachers, but my hope is, as I gain a little bit more background in this program and how folks can apply, is to get a team of Albemarle County teachers out there for next year, because it'll be in-person next year, so all the museums, all of the projects and connections, it should be really fun.
Okay, that is really cool. And do you think you could get us any special behind-the-scenes passes to the Space and Science Museum?
Oh, man, if I find out, I will certainly let you know. So, just so you know, with the Air and Space Museum, the Uddvarhazy, so the Air and Space Museum has two locations, the Uddvarhazy Center, which is over by Dulles, and that is the big airplane hangar where they have like Space Shuttle and planes and the Blackbird, like all the big stuff, and then they have the one on the National Mall, which is the one that most people think about, and that's typically holds some of the smaller historic pieces of air and space history, but Uddvarhazy has been open for the past couple months, and the one on the National Mall is opening up the end of July, so very soon we shall be going there, but I've, I've got ideas for how to get our kids over there, too, and other folks here.
Much more important getting our kids there, I think we can all figure out how to get there.
Right, that's true.
Thank you, same here.
Are there any other comments or questions? Okay, if not, well, Kate, again, we really are pleased and so happy that you have this opportunity to sort of showcase Albemarle County Public Schools. So thanks so much for the presentation to us, and we do look forward to hearing more from you once your tenureship there has started, so thanks again.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Acuff, is that the end of Spotlight?
It is.
Okay. All right, announcements, I think we do have at least two from the cabinet, so...
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, Mr. Page, yep. So I think first we have an announcement from Dr. McLaughlin.
Yeah, thanks, Dr. Haas, and good evening, board members, I'm Pat McLaughlin, Chief of Strategic Planning, and I just wanted to take a minute to let you know how excited I am to have the chance to share with you and hear your feedback on our draft strategic plan at the board retreat tomorrow. As you'll recall, it was just over a year ago that we introduced you to our planning partners at Batel for Kids, and it's great to see that this project is finally coming to conclusion. So at the retreat tomorrow, Mike Nicholson and Shannon King from Batel will take you through a discussion of each major section of the plan to hear your affirmations, your concerns, questions, and suggestions, and we hope to use your feedback to bring you a final plan for adoption at our next business meeting on July 8th. So, I'm looking forward to seeing you all again tomorrow morning and getting to hear your feedback then.
Thank you, thank you very much, Dr. McLaughlin, then we also have an announcement from Dr. Harrison.
Thank you, Dr. Haas. Good evening, school board members. The Office of Community Engagement will host the Division's sixth annual Equity Conference on Friday, June 17th, from 8:30 a.m. through 12:30 p.m. The conference theme is Purpose, Passion, and Progress. Keep Rising to the Top. The purpose is to celebrate the continuation of a transformative journey of 69 educators who met the criteria for credentialing and culturally responsive teaching by earning a micro-credential or certification. The conference is about acknowledging passion by showcasing the unwavering commitment to Albemarle County Public Schools' evidence-based culturally responsive teaching, homegrown, best-practice model for addressing achievement gaps. The P of Practice is about highlighting the impact culturally responsive teaching is having on teacher and student learning. The featured educators will share how they have begun to shift their teaching practice to teaching to and through their students' strengths from a cultural lens. These 69 educators are examples of our desire as a school division to keep rising to the top. This featured group of educators represent our largest to date. We have grown from a cohort of four candidates in 2016 to 36 in 2018, to a total of 139 in 2020, and to a total of 2,008 educators completing the culturally responsive teaching process over our six-year history. I believe you have received a link to register for this conference. We currently have over 220 participants registered, and we hope that you will be able to join us. Thank you for allowing me to make this announcement.
Thank you very much, Dr. Harrison, and so, when the board members register, are they eligible for a t-shirt?
Yes, there is a delay in getting those printed, but they will receive one, absolutely, and so will you, Dr. Haas.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, Bernard. I have one announcement for the board, when you look at the consent agenda for tonight, there is, under information, for information, there is, there are some minor edits, well, not minor, but a few edits to the policy on masks and face coverings. It's policy EBA, and with summer programming imminent, we are seeking to make some changes to it around mask-wearing outdoors. Ross has worked on the policy, we did run by the, the changes we're looking at making with our local pediatricians, as well as the health district, they are, they are in agreement with them. We put them on the consent agenda tonight, but it was added today, and so we wanted to make, draw your attention to it in case you had looked at the agenda earlier and then came back to it again tonight. It's, won't be up for action until July 8th, so there's plenty of time to look at it, but I wanted to be sure that you could see it there. That's all I have, Mr. Page.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Haas, and Dr. McLaughlin, and Dr. Harrison. Is there any school board business at this time, you know, when on the board with any...
Chair Page.
Yes.
I just wanted to ask a clarifying question about the Dr. Harrison's announcement, it's Thursday, right?
Yeah, June, he said Friday, June the 17th, but...
It is Thursday, yes.
Okay.
Okay, I just want to be sure about that, thank you. Still wearing my t-shirt from last year.
Right, all right, so it is Thursday, June 17th. All right, any other questions or comments from the board?
I did have one piece of business, just that I, Matt attended it, but the Vision Keepers, I don't know if y'all remember, but post-pandemic, we had started to put a board member on this Vision Keepers group, which is a group dedicated... which is a group dedicated to expanding preschool access for kids and implementing a way to kind of track how kids are doing to make sure that they continue whatever progress they gained during preschool in our schools. It's a really good partnership, and they just had a meeting. I have a slide where they've kind of summarized the work that they've done, and I'm happy to share it with the rest of you. And then come January, maybe we can get another board member to attend those meetings as well. And Matt is a part of them and is contributing as well. They're doing good things. That's that day.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Ms. Carlson. Any other school board members with business at this time? Okay, if not, moving to our public comment, Ms. Carlson, vice chair.
Yep, I'm going to start by reading the public comic guidelines. The school board invites and actively seeks the public's input in the matters relevant to school board governance and provides for time during its business meetings to hear from Alamo County residents and community members. As authorized by ordinance of the County of Alamo, the school board will hold its meetings electronically during the COVID-19 pandemic. The school board is still committed to encouraging public comment despite its need to meet on a virtual basis. For this reason, there will be two ways for the public to provide comment. First, as always, written comments can be submitted to the school board clerk prior to the meeting and will be given to all the school board members for review. And second, so long as the school board holds its meetings electronically, members of the public wishing to provide public comment during the meeting may sign up online by 2:00 p.m. the day of the meeting. We have a lot of speakers tonight. I think the last time I checked, there was 41. And for that reason, each speaker's time, instead of the regular three minutes, it will be two minutes, and you should have all received that notification via email. Before electronic public public comment commences, what I'm a few things I think we should go over based on last time when we had a lot of things. One, I'm gonna just try to do an on deck thing. So I'll say the speaker and I'll tell the next speaker to kind of get lined up that they're gonna be next. Two, please make sure you're muted until it is your time to speak. And then three, and this is a really big one, please follow the Zoom meeting to determine when you need to speak. Don't look at the live stream because there is a delay and it can create it can create confusion. And I think there's someone that already, yep, great. So speakers during the meeting should state their name and address, our magisterial district, our school that they attend. Further, speakers should limit comments to those matters that are relevant to school board governance or the operations of the school division. And my last bit is although the school board will not respond directly to comments made during the public comment period, school board members may address comments at the end of the meeting agenda under other business. So with that. Oh, and one last little piece of advice, we don't have a timer. I time things on my phone. It's a little hard for you to see when there's one minute left. I really strongly encourage you to time yourself so you have a kind of an understanding of when your time is coming up. So the first speaker is going to be Fontina Bums, followed by Nikki Athie. So Fontina, I'm not sure if you're on.
I'm here. Thank you so much.
Yep, you can start.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I strongly support every parent's liberty to direct the upbringing, education, and care of their children as they see fit. I also feel that it is critically important that the school fosters a respectful, inclusive learning environment. Hopefully, these are common goals amongst everyone in this meeting, and as such, I would encourage parents to, one, examine the Courageous Conversations curriculum and slides. And two, to read Gerald Singleton's book Courageous Conversations about race, that this that is the basis of for this curriculum. After reviewing the resources, I have found that they are directly opposed to creating an environment where every child is respected. Instead of teaching our kids to judge people based on their actions and character, this curriculum strips them of their individual identity and lumps them into categories based on the color of their skin, gender, sexual orientation, et cetera. As an example, the eighth grade curriculum slide specifically states that it is wrong to say things like, we all belong to the human race, and there are two sides to every story. This curriculum actually says that these logical and uniting statements are racist and building blocks towards genocide. As a society, we have to work to achieve unity and mutual respect. A curriculum that divides children into groups and places primary importance on attributes that they cannot control will not achieve this goal. Thank you so much for your attention.
Thank you for those comments, Ms. Bums. The next speaker is going to be Nikki Athie, and following that will be Tim Hinson.
Good evening. I'm Nikki Athie from Samuel Miller. I will submit a letter detailing why I oppose the foundation principles behind the anti-racist policy, the overhaul of the strategic plan, the continuation of the Courageous Conversations program, the ill-conceived use of funds supplied to equity trainers and outside policymakers, and my strong objections to the changes to the sex offender notification policy. I will also detail concerns about the subjective standards for introducing and reviewing new curriculum, the equity review cycle for updates to policy, and evaluation criteria of success and the new paradigm set forth by the draft strategic plan. I asked tonight for board members to commit to listening, hearing, and responding in earnest to the concerns of the community. Some of the feedback that concerned parents are receiving from the school board or ACPS staff has ranged from disinterested to patronizing to flatly arrogant. What is being presented to you is genuine concern, well-thought-through and well-researched positions, and hopefulness for achieving a solution agreeable to all, and all with the best interest of children at heart. What citizens who disagree with ACPS positions and its agenda have received in response is mockery, closed doors, and desires to strip them of the ability to choose what is best for their children. Citizens have entrusted this board with a grave responsibility to provide a foundational education for Alamo County children, commensurate with the $193 million budget. This trust has been either misdirected at best or abused at worst. ACPS is not a place for activism or social experimentation. It is a place for sober deliberation of how to deliver the very best we have to offer children. And it is a place to set an example for how to balance priorities and work together when we have wildly different opinions without encouraging and stoking us versus them mentalities. I offer, I respectfully off, I ask you to respectfully considerations of those who are seeing the fruits of these policies for the first time. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Ms. Athie. The next speaker will be Tim Hinson, followed by Sarah Harris.
Hi, I'd like to thank you all for the work that went into the Courageous Conversations program. I grew up in a nice suburb of a college town. I attended a Catholic school with nuns as teachers. But despite that, when I was young, much younger than middle school, I heard some ignorant things, some racist things, hurtful things, and repeated some of them, not really understanding the deeper meaning. And at that point, I don't really remember anyone saying, whoa, hold on. So I'm happy to have my kids get an open, honest educational forum to learn about these issues and help my kids understand and know better. I know there are people who don't support this program, but please remember the 700 people who signed a letter supporting courageous conversations. Don't give up. We're all with you. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Mr. Hinson. The next speaker will be Sarah Harris, followed by Heidi Gilman Bennett. Ms. Harris, I think your sound is, and you're not, doesn't show you as muted, but I can't hear you. Okay, we'll come back to you and let you figure it out. So we'll go to Heidi Gilman Bennett, followed by Madeline Benedict, and then I'll loop back to you, Ms. Harris.
Hi, my name is Heidi Gilman Bennett. I'm a parent of two kids at Henley. First of all, I want to speak in support of the Henley Middle School student journalists who have been quoted in national conservative publications recently. I congratulate these students for their fine writing on the 1619 Project and LGBTQ identity. And I thank their teacher, who has led outstanding, real-world lessons on both facts and free speech. Along with over 700 other people, I urge the school board to continue to support the approved ACPS anti-racism policy with professional development and instructional materials. I am so personally grateful to the Henley Diversity Resource Teachers for creating lessons that are so age-appropriate and engaging, and also to their classroom teachers who are leading the Courageous Conversation lessons so thoughtfully. These lessons have sparked great conversation in my home. My sixth grader, mama, I have a bias towards cheeseburgers. And my eighth grader is so ready for the uncomfortable questions about skin color and economic and social disparities that he sees around him in the world. I am also glad that teachers are affirming and fully including the transgender and gender expansive students who are at Henley. That's in ACPS policy and state law, plus it's consistent with my family values and my church values. I especially want to thank Dr. Costa for her bold leadership. All of the Henley educators are helping us raise a generation of humans who will try to make the U.S. and especially our local community more just and equitable. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Ms. Gilman Bennett. The next speaker will be Madeline Benedict, and then we will try you again, Ms. Harris.
Hi, everyone. My name is Madeline Benedict. I'm an eighth grader at Henley Middle School, and I live in the Samuel Miller District. I'm going to be talking about the anti-racism policy and courageous conversations and why I support them. As a young white girl going to an almost all-white school, I've seen subtle and blatant racist views displayed by my fellow classmates on multiple occasions. And I'm not proud of it, but in most of those situations, I didn't say anything because I didn't know what to do because I wasn't educated on the topics of racism and anti-racism. There are two specific lessons I want to touch on when it comes to courageous conversations. One was a video we watched about police brutality for people of color, and one talked about white privilege. The video showed issues that are very serious in our community and are the kinds of productive conversations and topics that we really need to delve into. People with white privilege, myself included, should be held to the standard of acknowledging white privilege, racism, and trying to dismantle both. Acknowledging white privilege is not enforcing the idea that white people are better than black people. White privilege is prevalent in our society because of the discriminatory laws and oppression that black people faced and are still facing. Ignoring white privilege or claiming that it isn't real is ignoring systemic racism and oppression to make you feel more comfortable. I want to make it very clear that the school is in no way teaching us that white people are bad. The only purpose is to bring awareness to these kinds of issues. Those of you who think that the county is pushing a political agenda or narrative, the idea that being anti-racist is somehow an attack on your political or religious views because it promotes being against bigotry is disgusting. If being racist is considered a political view to you, and you agree with that political view, then you're just racist. Using politics or religion to excuse and offend bigotry is hindering our efforts as a community to make black and LGBTQ people feel safe and accepted. The responsibility of advocating for black people for black lives should fall onto everyone, including white people, and we should use our privilege to speak up about such issues. The one-sided viewpoint some of you have referred to is the viewpoint that empathy and acceptance are important. And I personally think that that is a pretty good view to be teaching the students. Having these kinds of conversations in our school is so important because it shows our students how to combat and recognize racism within and out of our school environment. Black people do not get to opt out of being black or being discriminated against because of their skin color. So white people should not be allowed to opt out of acknowledging it. Thank you.
Perfect time. Thank you for those comments, Ms. Benedict. And I always take a second to say, thank you so much for coming to speak. I know it's hard, and I love when we have students come and share their experiences. So thank you. The next speaker, we will, Ms. Harris, if you want to try and see if your audio is working.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yay. Thank you, members of the school board. My name is Sarah Harris, and I'm here again tonight to voice my strong support for courageous conversations in particular and anti-racism and LGBTQ inclusion in ACPS in general. Several of us drafted an open letter in support of the board's commitment to equity and inclusion in ACPS, which you've already heard about. More than 700 members of our community, including parents, educators, and administrators, have signed it in just the last week. The letter's in your inbox. We're grateful for the work that educators, students, county leadership, and the school board have already done, such as creating a strategic plan that centers on equity, implementing the anti-racism policy through lessons and classroom practices and materials, and providing professional development for teachers and staff in CRT, which we all know means culturally responsive teaching. And we're proud of where the county is heading. With the forthcoming approval and implementation of the Policy on the Treatment of Transgender and Gender Expansive Students in Schools, which is required prior to the start of the next school year, ACPS is sending a clear message of acceptance and celebration of our LGBTQ students. As for the opinion that it should be the parents, not the students, having these conversations, we have been for years. We've been listening and learning and making important progress. It's why these policies are in place, and it's how these laws have been passed. The list of signatures includes over 125 students, indicating their eagerness to have these conversations. But they too have been doing this work for years. Students were instrumental in the development of the anti-racism policy, so don't underestimate them or what they can handle. None of this is new. None of this should be controversial. Alamo County Public Schools is firmly and categorically on the right side of history with this adoption of these policies and the implementation of these this curriculum. And the vast majority of the community supports this critical work. So stay strong, stay focused, and thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Ms. Harris. I did not announce the next speaker. We have Nancy from Whitehall. I do not know the last name, and that will be followed by Marsh Patty. So Nancy. I do see a Nancy.
I am going to give my time to Marsh Patty, please.
Okay, thank you. So Marsh Patty will be next, followed by John Bryce. And just so we're clear, it doesn't double the time. I don't believe you can't give your time to someone to double their time, but you can you can yield the floor if you don't want to provide a comment. So Marsh Patty, you're up.
Great. Thank you very much. Good evening. My name is Marsh Patty, and I'm a parent of two children in the Whitehall District. Tonight, I want to present a letter or petition to the school board. I want to be clear that I did not personally author this petition, but I am a signatory. I was asked by a collection of parents to present it to the board, and I do so tonight with great respect for the diverse viewpoints of many caring parents. On Monday, June 7, this petition was created to request transparency, discussion, and community engagement regarding the Courageous Conversations pilot at Henley. It also asks that this pilot be paused until there is an opportunity for transparency and discussion. In just three days, the petition is now nearing 300 signatures. The signatories are over 18 years of age. They do not include children. The petition was translated into Spanish to advance the important goal of being as inclusive as possible for our Alamo County residents. I ask us all to keep in mind and respect that the signatories no doubt have their own reasons for signing the petition. We come from different political and religious views and from a variety of life experiences. Though our differences may be many, there is in fact one strong voice with respect to this pilot. I would like to read a portion of our petition. As diverse members of the Alamo County community, we join our neighbors in supporting a learning environment for our children that is free from discrimination, hate, exclusion, and bullying of any kind. We are concerned about the new Courageous Conversations program being piloted at Henley and whether it is the right way to achieve the above goals. We are all united in supporting. We, the undersigned members of the Alamo County Public School community, are writing to request a pause in any future and broader implementation of the program to allow adequate time for, one, a comprehensive, fact-driven, and balanced analysis and review of program content by key stakeholders, including parents. And number two, open public conversations and forums to discuss the materials. As a first step, we ask the board to hold a town hall where the components of the pilot can be presented to the public in questions asked. We also request that quantitative feedback from the pilot be shared, including the performance metrics for the program, its original goals, and how success is being measured.
Mr. Patty?
Yes.
I'm so sorry. Please forward that to us. We will read it, I promise. And in the future, if you're speaking on behalf of a group of people, you can let us know. We can extend your time in the future, so you know. I'm sorry to thank you all. The next speaker will be John Bryce, followed by Kristi Commons.
Hi, I'm John Bryce from Samuel Miller, and I have two simple requests for the board regarding the rollout of its Courageous Conversations program. Based on what I've heard from other parents, I have some major concerns. However, like most parents, I need a lot more information from you. You failed to communicate your intentions and process to us. Now, I hope it's not the case, but it seems like you're attempting to implement a controversial, unproven program as quickly and quietly as possible, without the required due diligence and without including the parents and taxpayers. Where is the transparency, the communication? Where is the inclusive community discussion? Where are the town halls, the surveys and comment periods? How could you possibly think it might be acceptable to roll out something like this without a minimum of one town hall per district? Why are you excluding the very community you're supposed to serve? And where's the data from the pilot program, which conveniently was implemented at the 11th hour during a pandemic while parents were distracted and juggling more balls than ever? What were the target outcomes? Were they achieved? How were they measured? As a parent, I want. As a parent, I want what's best for my children, but your lack of due diligence has excluded me from a top-secret process. Was that your intent? I'm requesting that you take a timeout on the rushed rollout of this program to communicate with us transparently. Give us a chance to review the data, to ask questions and provide feedback. Give us a chance to weigh in on what's best for our children. I'm also requesting that you invite us parents to have some courageous conversations during town halls before introducing content from your controversial pilot program to any additional classrooms. Thank you for your kind attention.
Thank you for those comments, Mr. Bryce. The next speaker will be Kristi Corman, correction, followed by Christine Koenig.
Good evening. I'm a mother of two A C P S elementary students. When I first heard rumblings of the courageous conversation pilot program at Henley, the information was hearsay. I began to ask parents who had students at Henley, and they knew very little, which was even more concerning. As I began to dig in and ultimately saw the slides of the curriculum, I was shocked to say the least. My concern is the apparent deceit or at a minimum, lack of transparency between the school and parents. It made me question what high schoolers and elementary schools, our students, are being taught behind our backs. Regardless of the content of the curriculum, the big red flag here is the process and the lack of transparency. Why is this being hidden? Why does a slide presented to our eighth graders say, and quote, "What is said in our classroom must stay in our class community"? Surely, we all agree that these are minors, and parents have legal and moral rights to the care and control of their underage children. I implore all parents to consider this. What happens when the day comes, and it will, that you're on the other side of agreeing with the curriculum in schools? Won't you want to know that the precedent has been set for a methodical process where materials are shared, feedback is received, and a respectful conversation and decision is reached? Don't you want to know that your children's safety comes first to our school leaders? What's the rush on this program? What's the big secret? Nothing is gained by rushing. Slow down, press pause, and be transparent with parents. Thank you.
Thank you very much for those comments, Ms. Corman's. Um, and since you didn't state it, I'll just say for the record, you're from the Samuel Miller District. Um, next up will be Christine Konig, followed by Nathan Moore.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can.
I thank you. Um, hello, I'm Christine Konig, a Brownsville parent. I'm confused and frustrated. I watched the last school board meeting. I was confused by all the parent comments about a pilot program at a school my child will attend in a few years. I am familiar with the culturally responsive teaching at A C P S, and from what I have personally seen and heard, I believe it is a good and valuable program. Critical race theory is a new term for me, and I had to Google it. Honestly, I'm still not sure I understand it. Uh, courageous conversations is apparently a new pilot program at Henley, but I couldn't find anything about it on the A C P S website, so I Googled it. And links to local news articles and websites I've never visited before came up. There I found it were referred to as leaked materials. Were they truly leaked? If so, why were they not meant to be shared with parents? I reviewed the quote leaked PowerPoint, and it seemed to have some good slides about bias and others that may stimulate really powerful conversations. There are also slides that I'm not quite sure what they're trying to get at, so I want to know more so I can understand. So my questions are, will all materials in this new curriculum be shared with parents? Were there and will there be opportunities for parent feedback across all of A C P S? And has A C P S engaged in accumulating feedback from diverse parent populations across the county and not just Henley parents? How is this pilot program being evaluated, and what are the measurable success criteria, both for the pilot and the program moving forward? When and how will the decision be made to roll it out to other schools? I'm frustrated that I don't have direct and detailed information from A C P S on anything related to this program, and all I have is Google. I'm sure other parents like me are waiting for this communication from A C P S, especially since this new curriculum has made national news and is creating controversy. Finally, what kind of training were teachers given to implement courageous conversations? Is it true that teachers were given the materials just ten days before they were being required to teach it? Were teachers given any training in how to guide the discussion so it doesn't go in a harmful direction? Are teachers being given the support they need to make this a positive learning experience for all? We are supposed to be creating safe spaces for our children and to have these important and sensitive conversations. And without the proper tools and training to support our teachers, you could end up traumatizing and re-traumatizing some of our most vulnerable and at-risk students. These conversations are so important, so let's take the time to do it right. Slow down, involve parents in the community, set metrics for success, and actually give teachers the support and training they need to make it successful. We can't afford to get this wrong and destroy any progress that has already been made. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for those comments, Ms. Koenig. The next speaker will be Nathan Moore, followed by Samuel Parks.
Thanks, Katrina. Uh, my name is Nathan Moore from Rio District, and my kids had some very good years at Woodbrook Elementary. Uh, a year ago, I would have said my two girls instead of my two kids, uh, because my two kids were both born biologically female. My older child, who's now twelve years old, came out to me as a trans boy in December. Uh, that was an adjustment for sure, but I am so proud to have Charlie as my son and so proud of his courage. Because what really matters in all this is that all of our kids in Albemarle County feel loved and that they feel supported, not just by their dads and their moms, but by their community. What matters is for all of our kids to be able to lead free and flourishing lives. As they grow into adolescence and then young adulthood, they need to be physically safe, they need to be economically secure, they need to feel heard and understood and feel a sense of belonging. And it's our job to tear down the structural walls that exclude some people from living those free and flourishing lives. That's why I support initiatives like courageous conversations, that curriculum, as well as Albemarle County's overall efforts to engage in culturally responsive teaching. And I just want to comment for a minute. There are people on the right who don't like this model, and they're egged on by media outlets that are literally fascist. Uh, these people think it's perfectly fine for some kids to feel unsafe, just not theirs. Uh, for some kids to experience discrimination, just not theirs. For some kids to be pushed out of the resources that our society offers, just not theirs. Uh, but they know they can't say those things here in polite society, so instead they go on and on and on about process, right? They're wrong. As a school system, please continue to support culturally responsive teaching, and please, uh, keep making that courageous conversations pilot program better and better. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for those comments, Mr. Moore. The next speaker will be Samuel Parks, followed by Rebecca Elliott.
Hello, my name is Sam Parks from the Whitehall District, and I bring the perspective tonight of homeschooling parents. Through the past year, a number of families have confided in us that they're pulling their children out of Albemarle County schools, often after witnessing what their children were taught virtually. For example, one family witnessed their second grader being taught that people are sometimes not the gender they were assigned at birth, and that if they have a funny feeling in their belly right now, maybe they are one of those people. Finding these and other lessons to be manipulative, psychologically destabilizing, and certainly usurping of their parental role, these parents remove their children from their schools quietly, lest they be labeled bigots. Board, I've reviewed the courageous conversations curriculum, and rather than make pronouncements, I want to ask you to consider a few questions. One, will students formed by this curriculum be more likely to treat others as unique individuals? Or instead see others as stand-ins for an identity group? Two, are students likely to emerge more emotionally resilient, more graceful with others? Or will they be less so, more likely to find trauma or grievance in everyday conflicts and disappointments? Three, will students emerge with more of a sense of belonging, a shared common identity? Or will they feel further fractured into identity groups, groups almost designed to be antagonistic? Four, will our minority students emerge more ennobled and enabled to participate in American civic life? Or will they have had the expectation reinforced that the odds are stacked against them? Five, will teaching our white students that their skin corresponds with privilege and oppression make them less or more vulnerable to the seductions of white nationalism? Members of the board, search your hearts and be honest with yourselves. You have been entrusted with a molding of young minds. Do not be cowed by a cultural zeitgeist, but know that history will not look kindly on this. It is not too late for you to do the right thing. Open this curriculum up to transparent community review, and know that to fear doing so is the surest sign that something is very amiss. Thank you.
Thank you very much for those comments, Mr. Parks. The next speaker will be Rebecca Elliott, followed by Luca Schrere. Schrere. So Rebecca, um, or Ms. Elliott, if you are on, now is your go time. Let me see if I see you.
I do not see her.
Okay, um, I will put her a note, try her at the end if she comes on. So next up then will be Luca Schrere, followed by Sean Johnson.
All right. I would like to start off by telling you all a story. I have two lesbian mothers. I first experienced homophobia when I was in kindergarten. We were talking about our families, and I mentioned that I have two mothers. I was told by another child that I couldn't have two mothers and that I must have a mother and father. All throughout my elementary school years, I was ostracized, always asked whom my quote-unquote "real dad" was. Uh, or who was like the dad in my parents' relationship. It got worse in middle school and all the way up to high school, where I have been called slurs. So here's what I have to say. If your child is old enough to say hurtful and hateful things, they are old enough to learn that what they're saying is not okay. And people trying to prevent that from being taught are enabling and supporting bullying and hate. I was going to speak my mind, um, I was going to speak on my support um, of the anti-racism policies, but I believe Madeline Benedict has said what I wanted to say, so I'm just going to second that. I would, however, like to say that if a person has a problem with their child being, um, learning how to not be racist, they might be racist themselves. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, um, Luca. The next speaker will be Sean Johnson, followed by Sophia Toronto.
Hello, uh, Sean Johnson, Whitehall District. Um, I want to talk about the critical race theory instruction that's being proposed. We have three kids with one currently at Henley. Our kids are not racist, never have been. They never told us that they feel racism or lack of inclusion are issues in their schools. They're not confused about racism, religion, or their gender. They are well aware that racism does exist in many shapes and forms. I've reviewed the materials that you intend on sharing with the students at Henley and do not approve. This material contains many false assumptions, omits many important facts, and will lead kids to many wrong conclusions. Your student presentation material for eighth graders, for example, was designed to create reactions from students that fit your social engineering goals. On slide fifty-three of the eighth grade material, you point out that black men are more likely to be imprisoned than white men. Also, that black men are more likely to be killed by police. What is missing are important facts that put these stats into real context. According to the FBI, in two thousand nineteen, black men accounted for fifty-six percent of all homicides, while the whole black population was only fourteen percent of the U S. The FBI also reported that an overall per capita offending rates for black men was six times higher than white men. There's much more data available that really shows the whole picture. Yet, in developing your program, you have cherry-picked convenient statistics to perpetuate a radical false narrative. On slide thirty-eight, a biracial couple answers questions about white privilege. One of the questions asks if you've ever had to teach your children how to not get killed by police. Any common sense parent knows that children need to be caught to obey laws and respect law enforcement. I have forwarded that material to both Police Chief Ron Lance and Sheriff Jan Bailey just recently this week, so waiting for comment from them. Finally, I do want to thank the Citizens Advocating Responsible Education of Albemarle County. In only a few days, this group has grown dramatically and has become very well organized.
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah.
Your time is over.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for providing your comments. The next speaker will be Sophia Toronto, followed by Levy Duncan. So Sophia Toronto, I will see if I see her real quick.
Uh, hi. Uh, my name is Sophia Toronto. I'm a tenth grader at Community Lab School. In my opinion, I think it's great for teachers to talk about anti-racism in school because learning our history is important. It's not as hard as one might think. One way it would be helpful is being taught the history of how people came up with the vocabulary for racial slurs and how not to, and, and why not to use them. There are many people who aren't educated about slurs and their history. So allowing the teachers to teach the history of slur words is important. The teacher can show a documentary about how people came up with the slurs and why they are used. I know slur words are offensive, but why do people use them so much to hurt other people? Why can't this be acknowledged? Thank you. Thank you for this time, for your time.
Thank you so much for those comments, and again, I will call out, thank you as a student for coming and sharing your perspective. We always appreciate it hearing from our students.
You're welcome.
The next speaker will be Levy Duncan, followed by Scott Guggenheimer. So I do not see Levy Duncan in here. So hearing nothing, I will move to Scott Guggenheimer, followed by Mary Govan and Levy Duncan. I'll move to the bottom of the list.
Thanks. Uh, my name is Scott Guggenheimer. I'm the parent of two students at Henley Middle School. Both my students are white. Uh, I, I don't think they have a ton of firsthand experience with feeling excluded uh, because of their identity. They show up at Henley Middle School, and they are loved and valued and affirmed and challenged, and they're having a wonderful academic experience. I cherish it. I'm grateful for it. I think they'll build on that academic experience, uh, whatever sort of life they want to live. And when I reflect on that, three things occur to me. First, not all kids in our schools are having that same type of experience. Secondly, we can't really have a fair democracy if not all of our young people are having an academic experience on which they can build whatever sort of life they want to live. We can't have a just society without an inclusive school system. And third, the aspirations that the school board has articulated in the anti-racism policy, the work that educators have been doing for years to become more culturally responsive in their teaching, and the work being done at Henley Middle School to start having conversations about race and identity. These efforts don't take anything away from my kids. Being more inclusive, having more affirmation and more love for some young people does not mean less of anything for other young people. In fact, it's more of everything for all young people, more opportunities to relate to other people, more skill building for navigating complex problems from diverse perspectives, a deeper appreciation of our skills and strengths, both individually and collectively. So I continue to support the school board's anti-racism policy. It's so exciting to hear that over seven hundred people feel the same way. And I'm so glad that Henley Middle School has started to have courageous conversations in their classrooms. Thanks.
Thank you very much for providing those comments, Mr. Guggenheimer. The next speaker will be Mary Govan, followed by Heath Forbes.
My name is Mary Govan, and I am a student at Albemarle High School. Growing up in the Western feeder pattern, most of my friends and most of my fellow students and many of my teachers were white, unlike me. I learned that sometimes even a really friendly and caring school doesn't feel friendly and welcoming when your race sets you apart. For example, it's hard to feel like a recognizable individual when teachers regularly get you mixed up with the only other Asian kid in your grade. I go to Albemarle now, and one big change that I liked was that there are so many different types of people with different types of names and backgrounds. I don't think Western and Henley are responsible for changing the population of the schools, and I don't think they should. But I support the Albemarle County Public Schools anti-racism policies and LGBTQIA inclusion work because these policies might help make schools really welcoming for people who don't match the majority of people at that school, the way I didn't. One last thing. Tonight, I am listening to a lot of adults who are scared of having students and teachers talk about race and identity. But as an Asian American, I can't escape these topics. And I need my teachers and peers to know how to have those conversations with me and when I'm around and feel safe having them. I want to thank A C P S for continuing to recognize and support curriculum like courageous conversations. Thank you.
Thank you very much for those comments, Ms. Govan, and again, thank you for coming to speak as a student. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
The next speaker will be Heath Forbes, followed by Jay Jennings. Mr. Forbes, if you're on, now is your time.
I do not see him.
Okay, so we'll have Jay Jennings, followed by Matthew Merzewiski.
Hi, thank you. I'm Jay Jennings. I'm the father of a rising fifth grader at Mountain View and a resident of the Scottsville District. First, I applaud the creation of the Community Working Group that began meeting last night to work on the Mountain View overcrowding issue. I want to bring forward data to help you as you work to decide where our children will spend their first full school year since the middle of third grade. It's not easy to find studies on fifth graders in middle school. However, the two thousand and eight- However, the two thousand and eight paper, The Negative Impacts of Starting Middle School in Sixth Grade, is telling. The authors found that students who attend middle school in sixth grade are twice as likely to be disciplined and perform worse on standardized test scores than their counterparts in elementary school. According to the study, the results suggest that exposing sixth graders to older peers has persistent negative consequences on their academic outcomes. This is important because no matter how the day would be structured for fifth graders at Walton, many of the children would spend nearly two hours a day on a bus with eighth graders. This study was based on sixth graders. It's not a stretch to extrapolate the effect on fifth graders would be at least as negative. According to the VDE Offense Frequency Report, over the past five years, Walton had nearly two times as many offenders per capita as any other middle school in the county, primarily substance and behavioral offenses. Over one student in ten is disciplined each year. Meanwhile, Mountain View Elementary School has reported no offenders over the same five-year period. If we combine the existing disciplinary situation at Walton with the findings of the cited study, we must conclude that sending our rising fifth graders, who have spent nearly a year and a half outside of school, to Walton is setting them up for failure and trauma that will likely follow them for the rest of their academic careers. Overcrowding in the building at Mountain View cannot be the only factor, nor should it be the primary driver in determining where our children spend their final year of elementary school. Based on this data, the school system should consider every other possibility, including learning cottages in the bus loop and/or using the Boys and Girls Club offered space to reduce overcrowding before putting nine and ten year olds on a bus unsupervised for up to two hours a day with thirteen and fourteen year olds. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for those comments, Mr. Jennings. The next speaker will be Matthew. I see you smiling because this can't be that uncommon. Matthew Merzad Jewiski, followed by Lori Tamborino.
Yes, Matthew Merzad Jewiski, great job. Uh, Whitehall District. ACPS policies state that, quote, "Children and youth function best when there's clear and cooperative communication between the home and the school." And I'm here tonight to say this has not occurred with the Henley Courageous Conversations pilot. Um, indeed, just yesterday, a survey was emailed to the Henley students to gather feedback on the eighth grade program. Not only were parents not surveyed, they were not even made aware that the survey was being sent. And for the majority of this year's pilot, the website has read that the eighth grade units are forthcoming for the CCAR program. Um, as of today, those slides have been uploaded, so thank you for that. But these are not the same slides that my child was actually presented in units one and two in the classroom. So my question is, where is the cooperation, trust, and transparency? The pattern seems to be to err on the side of secrecy instead of transparency. You've heard that theme a bit. If I'm wrong, please prove it to the community that holding multiple town halls will expose and dispel that that statement and hold them over the next few months, please. Second, quantitative evidence uh of success and failures must be presented in this forum, I request. The pilot was rushed to implement in secret, but worse, without key performance indicators. Why do I say that? A parent recently asked the Henley administration in a public forum, "How does a teacher know that they've met daily, weekly, and big vision goals?" To which the administration responded, I quote, "We don't have a very good measure for advisory. We give the kids surveys. They give us feedback." And so that's really going to be some of it, and it will almost be all qualitative in what the kids say, and they've been saying all along. It's not like a unit test or something uh that we plan to give. So the majority of our measure of success is going to be qualitative feedback in the form of writing for kids that check in. But one of the things we could have done better, we didn't do, is a pre-test that we could have something that we uh that might have been a stronger element, end quote. So I urge the positives rollouts. Uh, host multiple town halls, please, over the next few months. Parents in other districts, you've heard from some of them, are severely unaware of the program, and transparency should reach them too. And personally, I have a lot of positive ideas, productive ideas, that I think can help these kids and meet all the goals that you're hearing from both sides, honestly, on this topic. It can't fit into two minutes. We should come together and share those ideas, brainstorm, build on them as a community. So that's my urge to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for those comments. The next speaker will be Lori Tamborino, followed by Marie Merzad Jewiski.
Hi, good evening. My name is Lori Tamborino, and I'm the parent of a rising fifth grader at Mountain View Elementary School. I'm here tonight to once again ring the alarm regarding the proposed move of fifth graders to Walton for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. When I spoke at the meeting on May twenty-seven, I begged the administration to put together a working group to address the urgent issue so an alternate plan could be put in place. A work group was, in fact, organized, and I hopefully watched the livestream last night. As the meeting progressed, however, it became painfully obvious that the administration's goal with this work group is not to solve the problem, but instead to run out the clock on making a different plan for the fifth graders at Mountain View for the upcoming school year. Then they could say that they tried, but it's too late to implement a different plan for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year and ship the fifth graders off to Walton as originally planned. And the people that would bear the brunt of that decision would be the rising fifth graders, one of which is my child. But I'm not here to advocate for my child tonight. The painful fact is that my white, middle-class child will be fine regardless of what decision is made for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. She's not battling things that some of her classmates are having to, such as food insecurity and housing insecurity. The families that will be most negatively affected by this proposed change are not being heard by the county's administration, the school members, and the community at large. So I'd like to read some of the comments that came out of last night's work group regarding what is important to them about being at Mountain View for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. One parent said, "Many families in my community are unable to be with kids in the morning to get the bus. We need the schedule to work for families with single parents or for families that have issues with transportation." Another parent said, "We need our kids to have good experiences with the teachers. The teachers in Mountain View are supportive. They understand our community. They are great at communicating with me in Spanish when I need them to." And finally, one of the most heartbreaking comments, "My family needs to not fight this hard to keep our kids from suffering more than they already have." I once again implore the Almaro County Public School Administration to treat this with the urgency that it deserves and develop a strong working plan to keep the rising fifth graders in their school home at Mountain View for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Ms. Tamborino. Next up will be Marie.
Hi. Can you hear me okay?
I can.
Okay. Hi, um, thank you for having me. I'm pleading with you to hear the feedback regarding courageous conversations and to halt this program. This was a pilot program and it did not work. I want to be honest. I support better protection for LGBTQ students from discrimination. We must always work to protect the dignity and worth of every human person, especially our youth. However, ACPS outright endorsing gender fluidity as the one correct view is not the same thing as protecting one against discrimination. If this curriculum continues, it has two possibilities for my children. One, stay quiet, keep their head down, or two, change their beliefs. The message sent from their very own tax-funded school and staff is clear. There is only one set of correct beliefs, and what your Christian religion teaches is wrong. For everyone speaking out like I am today, there's another fifty who are too afraid that they will be fired from their jobs, ostracized from their community, all this from the very curriculum that is geared towards fighting discrimination. As published research has shown, anti racism training often causes divisiveness and does not authentically meet the goal set before it. Rather, studies show missions unite. I'd like to give you a concrete example. My child had the delight of presenting a multi-greek group project at school. The students, when placed together, worked hard in trying to present a cohesive argument. It was mock trial. In this small group of students, I couldn't be more proud of how well they worked together on a common goal. What is noteworthy about this is that these students have incredibly different values, identities, and beliefs. They all completely respected one another and were kind to one another. This is what we need, not more conversations led by the school with a magnifying glass on their differences. Courageous conversations is not a common mission. It is a forced mission from a particular set of beliefs. Our kids are not to be experimented on. I hope the school board will correct course and learn from these courageous conflicts. Thank you.
Thank you very much for those comments. The next speaker, and just so we have an update for school board members and those, we have about fifteen speakers left. We have a few people that missed, so I'll cycle through them at the end. The next speaker is going to be Matt Anderson, followed by Carlos Ibanez. Mr. Anderson.
Hi, I'm Matt Anderson. I have two daughters at Henley Middle School. At the last board meeting, I asked whether ACPS was introducing curricula that is based in whole or in part on critical race theory. I would like to be clear, I was not talking about culturally responsive teaching. I'm asking about critical race theory as the basis or underpinnings of your anti racism initiatives. I've been performing further analysis of ACPS materials. I believe I've probably answered my own question, but I'm still interested in a publicly available statement from ACPS. To me, it seems clear that ACPS is introducing curricula that is based at least in part on critical race theory. It is also clear to me that you're working at foundational levels with materials that include some unhealthy indoctrination. This may not be as apparent to you, but it is to me as an ex cult member. When you combine bad forms of us versus them social identity teachings with some additional unhealthy indoctrination, you have a recipe that can produce bad outcomes in the lives of children. You can also lay the foundation for new kinds of racism between American social groups under initiatives labeled anti racism, equity, diversity, and inclusion. Labels like these do not mean a lot to ex cult members like me. We know how to look past the labels towards the substance and to consider the side effects of people's good intentions. In the end, it is not just about good intention. It is the overall effect which can nullify good intentions. I believe fair and open discourse will help demonstrate that my concerns have merit. Please do not misconstrue my concerns. I'm not invalidating the problems you're trying to solve or the goals you're setting to create a fair, inclusive environment without racism. I also know you desire to improve the educational performance for key groups that have consistently underperformed for years. I'm with you for these goals. However, I'm calling attention to problems in your methodology and approach. In other words, I see and understand your intentions. I do believe your intentions are good. But today, I am cautioning you as someone with knowledge and experience from cult environments that your best intentions are not enough. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate the opportunity to share.
Thank you so much for those comments, Mr. Anderson. The next speaker, and that was perfectly timed. The next speaker will be Carlos Ibanez, followed by Michelle Miles.
And I'm Jody Harrison. I have a child at Henley, and I'm reading on behalf of Dr. Carlos Ibanez, who cannot be here tonight. And here's his letter. Dear members of the Almaro County School Board, my name is Dr. Carlos Arbenas, and I'm writing you out of concern at the addition of the courageous conversations to the school curriculum. My wife Tatiana and I legally immigrated to this country many years ago in hopes of providing our children a brighter future and freedoms we were not allowed, having grown up in a socialist military dictatorship in Central America. We have experienced firsthand what government indoctrination is like and the helplessness of not being allowed to disagree or having an individual opinion other than the official version. Our children have been enrolled in ACPS since we moved here thirteen years ago. Our oldest son is a product of ACPS, was in all AP classes, and has successfully completed his first year at Johns Hopkins University. Our second son is a freshman at Western, is taking multiple AP classes, and is a straight A student. Our daughter is currently a student at Henley Middle School, will be in eighth grade next year, and is also doing well in class. None of us have ever had any incident or issue with discrimination or racial bias of any kind in the time that we have been here. So the courageous conversation is wanting to label my children as victims or subservient to a more privileged or dominant race is not accurate in our experience. Asking my children to label themselves as such would be, in our case, racist in nature. The entire concept of placing fault or blame or the need to feel guilty simply because of race, the color of skin, sex, or gender identity would violate the premises of individual rights, equal opportunity, and individual merit that my wife and I so highly coveted when we came to this country and have instilled in our children at home. Tatiana and I have seen the modules that will be presented during eighth grade, and we strongly disagree with several points that are mentioned. Forcing those on our child without allowing us to opt out is an overreach by the school system would amount to indoctrination as we know it, and at least an open and transparent discussion on the matter is warranted.
Ms. Harrison, your time is up, but if you could, if you have an electronic copy of that, you can email it to us or feel free to send the paper copy.
I can do that. Thank you.
The next speaker will be Michelle Miles, followed by Jared Govan. So do not hear anything from
I did not see her in the meeting.
Ms. Miles, so we will move on to Jared, and I believe you must have had another one speak because I wrote down how to pronounce it. I think, yep, Govan.
Thank you. Father of three students in the system in two districts and two more coming. Uh, the modern pace of social change, how it's changed in my lifetime alone is almost dizzying. I think it's fair and honest and, in fact, necessary to acknowledge that this can be challenging, messy, scary even. But we're faced here with a moral decision, a civil decision, one where we either address our complicated feelings about race, gender, sexuality, and religion for the good of our whole community, or accept the status quo at the expense of those who are just gaining a voice or those who have always struggled to be heard, to have a true cultural representation. So I see as a moral imperative, a civil rights imperative, the need to reexamine our country's complicated past with regards to race, to acknowledge the scientific community's modern understanding of gender and sexuality, to celebrate diversity as a source for greater strength in our community. This conversation, of course, begins in our homes, with our families, but that's not enough. It must continue in our schools. Indeed, it will in some form or another, whether we want it to or not. So it's our responsibility to frame this conversation in a way that doesn't perpetuate discrimination, neglect, marginalization. The conversation must continue with our educators and how they're empowered as advocates for all members of the community. It seems now that social justice and religious freedom are sometimes strangely at odds, but I ask how are the issues we're discussing today morally distinct from those faced by my parents' generation when debating school desegregation? For all this, which for me simply amounts to matters of justice and equality, I support, along with the other seven hundred signatures planned initiatives, to make our schools more inclusive and equitable for all. Thank you.
Thank you so much for those comments, Mr. Govan. The next speaker will be Peter Buckingham, followed by Laura Breeden. So, Mr. Buckingham.
He's not in the meeting.
Okay, I'll skip him. Laura Breeden, I saw earlier. Ms. Breeden, you're ready?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you. Um, I am in the Whitehall District. Um, as parents, our greatest responsibility is our children. We want to guide them and raise them according to our family principles and values. We do not all share the same vision for our children, but we do share a common bond, which is the love we have for our children. We all strive to do what we believe is best for them. That is our job as parents. My husband and I know what subject matter and material is appropriate for our children. No one else can or should determine that for them. We're not demanding the school board adopt our family's principles. It is a responsibility of the school board to ensure our children are given a solid education, being taught academics, reading, writing, math, science, history, without a hidden agenda. Nothing should be woven into the curriculum without parental consent. Our children are our children. They do not belong to the school board. They do not belong to the schools they attend. They do not belong to their principals. They do not belong to their teachers, and they do not belong to other parents in our community. Please focus your energy on academic excellence and leave the parenting in our hands. Um, my husband and I would appreciate the school board's kind consideration to pause the rollout of the Courageous Conversations curriculum or similar programs until a public survey or multiple town halls can be held. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for those comments, Ms. Breeden. The next speaker will be Karen Hill, followed by Amanda Moxon. So Karen Hill, let me see if I see her. I do not. So hearing nothing, I will skip her for now and move to Amanda, who I do see.
Great, thank you. Um, the fact that parents are rising up against equity and anti racism is a direct result of ACPS's inability to effectively engage the community with a clear, operationalized anti racism is a direct result of A C P S's inability to effectively engage the community with a clear operationalized anti racism strategy. For over two years, this administration and some of the current board members continually pushed back on anti racist efforts to ban Confederate imagery and struggled to clearly declare A C P S as an anti racist school system. You reap what you sow. Because of ineffective community engagement and dysfunctional communication strategies, A C P S and anti racist educators and community members are now being doxxed and targeted by a global right wing audience that was invited into this community through many of the speakers that spoke earlier this evening against the courageous conversations program. You reap what you sow. Because A C P S is not fully and authentically grounded in intersectional anti racist work, the rights of Black, Indigenous, and people of color, as well as LGBTQ plus students and educators is at risk. It's time to reckon with the ongoing coddling of racist white families in this school system. Why is it easier to coordinate brutal police attacks on anti racist parents than to shut down the destructive racist attitudes of bigoted white parents? If you replace the words courageous conversation or anti racism with desegregation, when you listen to each of those speakers speak, you will hear exactly the same messages that have been around since the dawn of time, as well as specifically sixty years ago during the civil rights and desegregation movement. I don't know how long you expect us to beg to keep our children safe. In the words of Laram Bennett Jr., an educator in a system of oppression is either a revolutionary or an oppressor. Please choose a side. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Ms. Moxon. The next speaker will be Allison Miller, followed by Emily Maitland.
Hi, you didn't give me a warning, but I'm ready.
Well, I'm sorry.
I want to just go for it. I'm a parent in the Whitehall District. I've got two kids in A C P S schools. And I'm thrilled to have been able to sign on to the letter submitted tonight in support of C C A R. It was especially meaningful to me that those who have signed on to the letter include not just parents, but teachers, administrators, doctors, mental health providers, counselors, adults who run programs for kids in our community, and most importantly, students. There are more of us out there and we are a hundred percent committed to supporting the school division and the board in this work. I also wanted to speak to a misconception floating around on social media recently. Culturally relevant teaching is not critical race theory. And I feel I can speak to this because I sat in on culturally relevant teacher training modules and a book study put on by A C P S this spring. I learned a ton and I would strongly encourage anyone who has concerns or questions to reach out to A C P S to find out how to get involved. At its essence, culturally responsive teaching is about investing in learning and understanding who students are and what they bring to the table and how best to support them in becoming independent learners. I think that if parents who are concerned take time to really understand what A C P S is doing, they'll see that it's not what national media outlets or people outside our county say it is. And I think what they'll see is that our teachers are doing an amazing work. I also want to address the idea that Henley is acting as like a renegade with this C C A R curriculum. It's just false. This curriculum was developed with input from around the county. And these, this curriculum was discussed at every monthly meeting that Dr. Costa had for us since January. I also just want to take a moment to shout out to the Student Equity Advisory Team. These students have hosted two amazing panels that show how much agency, empowerment, empathy, and passion they are bringing to the work that they are doing. I was so grateful to be a part of those. And finally, to the parents who are asking why we can't just wait and slow things down. I would just refer them back to James Baldwin, who in the nineteen eighties asked, how much time must we wait for your progress? Thanks.
Thank you for those comments, Ms. Miller. The next speaker will be Emily Maitland.
Hi.
So that I don't, so that I don't mess up for the next person. The speaker after that will be Sally Williamson. Sorry, Emily.
No problem. So my name is Emily Maitland and I am in the Rio District and I have two children in county schools. Last month I had the opportunity to attend a two day training with Dr. Kenneth Hardy that was organized by the Counseling Alliance of Virginia called Race Matters. He facilitated what you might call a courageous conversation with a range of local professionals working with children and families. I would like to share one concept that he highlighted in relation to the recent backlash that we're hearing tonight. To the county's efforts to serve all students, in particular those at the margins with dignity and respect. It's the distinction between safety and comfort. Dr. Hardy stated, everyone is entitled to safety. No one is entitled to comfort. The courageous conversations about identity and understanding and celebrating differences might have some people feeling uncomfortable. Does that mean we shouldn't be having those conversations? When our child is struggling to understand a concept or complete an assignment, do we prioritize their comfort over what we know they need to learn? For too long, the safety of marginalized students in A C P S has been compromised because of the priority of comfort of for white, cisgendered, able bodied, straight students and community members. A C P S is on the right track with anti racism policies, professional development, curriculum, and hiring decisions. We must prioritize the safety of the most marginalized, not the comfort of the privileged. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Ms. Maitland. The next speaker will be Allison Miller, oops, sorry, Sally Williamson, followed by Linda Dukes.
Hey, good evening. My name is Sally Williamson. I'm a parent in the Rybana District. I'm a queer parent. I was previously a queer student in schools in this area. I'm commenting this evening in support of the courageous conversation program, A C P S's anti racism policy. Full intersectional support of LGBTQ youth and culturally responsive teaching within the A C P S district. The concerned group of citizens and parents from Almarle County who are organizing as citizens advocating for responsible education or care do not represent me or hundreds of others who had signed on to the petition mentioned before. And that group of citizens should not be allowed to act as the arbiters of what constitutes responsible or education. Discomfort, as mentioned just in the comment before mine, is different than harm. Your family's opinions do not negate the existence or the lived reality of students and families in Almarle County and the harm that racism and bigotry has caused them within this school system. Pausing the implementation of anti racist goals in order to placate a portion of the community who benefit from the status quo is not a neutral action. A lack of anti racist action is not neutral. There's a reason this is a contentious issue because whether benevolent or overt, our culture is deeply rooted in white supremacy. We need to pull it out by the roots. I would like to uphold the students who previously spoke, who are ready and willing and and want to engage in these conversations. And I would like to uphold the staff and teachers who are leading them in these conversations. Thanks.
Thank you very much for those comments, Ms. Williamson. The next speaker will be Linda Dukes, who I see, followed by Burden Burkholder.
Hi, my name is Linda Dukes and I live in the Rio District. I'm a retired elementary school reading specialist. Most importantly, though, I'm a parent of two adults who attended Albemarle County Schools K through twelve. I strongly support the board's anti racism policy and the plan to implement an anti racism anti racism curriculum for all students. Both of our adult children are upset at how little they learned in school, with a couple of exceptions, about the history of Black, Latinx, Native, and Asian Americans and about the omissions and outright falsehoods they learned about how white Americans interacted with these groups of people. Most white citizens of Albemarle County do not routinely interact with people of color, except possibly in the workplace and rarely in situations of equality. And yet they they do not even realize how much richer their lives would be if they did. Even though our schools are not segregated, many classes pretty much are. We need to give all our kids the knowledge and skills they need to interact with all of their peers, valuing the inherent worth and dignity of each other. We need the courageous conversations program for all students. And this is from my husband Frank Dukes. He works with leaders from all around the state. These are cooperative extension agents, directors of nonprofit organizations, business executives, and local and state agency staff. He hears over and over again how their schools fail to teach them how to foster effective conversations about race, gender identity, and other equity issues within their organizations. Please let us not raise yet another generation of citizens who are so unprepared to enter the workplace or to live in peace with their neighbors. Thanks.
Thank you for those comments, Ms. Dukes, and that was perfectly timed. The next speaker will be Burden Burkholder, followed by Scott Townsend.
Yeah, hi, Whitehall District. My wife and I have been residents of Albemarle County for twenty years and raised three children here. First, to those responsible for the recently circulated letter that calls for the barring of an opt out option for the LGBTQIA plus curricula, your letter serves to highlight an important truth, that there are some issues so foundational to the health and well being of our children that the appropriate course of action is not compromise, but to fight for what we know to be true, not only for our own children, but for all of the children in our community. And on this point, I agree wholeheartedly with the signers of this petition and their allies. However, it is here that my agreement ends. I firmly believe, as many other parents and teachers in this county, that a true and therefore healthy understanding of human gender and sexuality is founded on the laws of nature and nature's God, that we are created male and female, that as such our biological sex and gender are inextricably bound. And therefore, any attempt to divide them does not bring health and well being to our children, but rather deep psychological and physical harm and harm that is often irreparable. So I say to those parents of like mind, it's not enough to come to the table begging for scraps. It's not enough to merely ask for the preservation of your opt out. It's time to fight for our children with the same clarity and determination as those who brought forward this petition. It's time to demand that our schools promote in their curriculum policies the understanding that we are all born male and female. And that gender cannot be separated from this binary reality without causing lasting harm. If you care about the children of this county and Commonwealth, do not stay on the sidelines. It is time to understand what you believe, why you believe it, and then fight for it. If Albemarle County Public Schools choose to inculcate your children with theories of sexuality and gender that threaten their health and well being, then it's time to wake up and pull your children out of the public school system. For this, for many, this will require deep personal sacrifice. But what treasure lays greater claim on our honor and sacred duty than the very hearts, minds, and souls of our children? Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Mr. Burkholder. The next speaker will be Scott Townsend, who I see. And then it will be followed by Erin Tally Pharoah and then Kate Soderman.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
I can.
Perfect. Thank you. I want to thank you for taking, for allowing me to come and speak again. As a soldier with twenty one years in the Army, I witnessed many, many types of discrimination. I was deployed around the world. I've been to Afghanistan multiple times. I've been to Ethiopia, Kuwait, Djibouti, and multiple other nations where I have seen bigotry and racism on many levels. I, I abhor racism. I abhor bigotry and I abhor discrimination. However, I am asking, along with my other colleagues that Albemarle County consider, halting the rollout of courageous conversations about race in order to allow us to have the chance, us as parents and community members, to work together to develop a more academic and inclusive education and program for our children. Looking at the definitions within this system, within this program, bias is defined as unfairly showing favoritism towards something or someone. That's a very reductionist definition of bias. When you see on the University of Minnesota's psychological, psychological school, they list twelve different cognitive biases to include anchoring bias, which is the overwhelming reliance on the first piece of information obtained and using it as a baseline for comparison. All the way to recency effect or recency bias in which recent events are easier to remember and therefore placed more heavily weighted than others. I am again asking that the Albemarle County Public School Board halt this rollout until we can have a series of workshops in which more parents are involved. More parents are allowed to speak and hear and give their opinion on this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for those comments, Mr. Townsend. The last two speakers on the list before we cycle through those who missed is going to be, first up is going to be Erin Tally Pharoah, followed by Kate Soderman.
Hi, good evening. I wanted to speak tonight about the courageous conversations. I actually have four children in the Whitehall District, two at Henley and two at Brownsville. I personally welcome conversations about race and identity. Within the Henley community as well as the school itself, however, my experiences and perspective are usually unwelcome, labeled as ignorant and unjustified, and most often are met with hostility and aggressive rhetoric. The third principle of the county's anti racism policy states explicitly that the board commits to respecting and championing the diversity and life experiences of all community members. The Henley community is failing at this and the pervasive school of thought is robbing those of us with differing opinions and perspectives of feeling unwelcome in our own town, robbing us of our freedom of speech and is attempting to rob us of the power to educate our children on the very sensitive topics of identity and race. Complex constructs that even adults have difficulty dissecting and analyzing. Despite this, Henley announced the courageous conversations on race curriculum on a Thursday with expected implementation the following week. Omission of documentation left parents with no choice but to make a gut decision as to whether to opt in or opt out. There was no time for educated decision making. Parents were simply expected to accept the decision that had been made on their behalf. If the county feels so strongly that this curriculum is instrumental in quote eliminating racism in the division, why not be completely transparent? Why not provide parents with all material prior to implementation so that we can more effectively help our children become citizens who quote practice identifying, challenging, and changing the value structures and behaviors that perpetuate systemic racism? Wouldn't such transparency help parents educate their children on how to, as laid out in the county's anti racist policy, become a lifelong learner who actively seeks new information and opportunities to grow in one's understanding about race and racism? How can we help our children to beat up standards, challenging, and disrupting practices that perpetuate racism and maintain power if we don't have access to the curriculum prior to implementation? Was there ever any intention to promote conversations about identity and race? Or was it simply an edict being imposed upon the parents of this community?
Ms. Tally, yep. The next up will be Kate Soderman.
Hi, thank you. My name is Kate Soderman. I'm a parent of two students in the Rio District. And I'm speaking today in support of an anti racist curriculum in our schools. Our children are growing up in a community where we have Confederate statues coming down, thankfully, and where we debate the role of police. They're growing up in a community that is still recovering from the horrors of the Unite the Right rally and where they see Black Lives Matter signs in their neighbors' yards. I think it's critical that the schools provide a safe place for students to learn about and discuss these issues. In our home, we talk about systemic racism, but in school, my kids will be able to hear from other students and teachers who have different experiences than our white family. So I applaud Albemarle County Public Schools for exploring this issue and I want to urge the school board to support an anti racist curriculum for all students. Thank you.
Thank you so much for those comments, Ms. Soderman. The, I will quickly cycle through those who missed. Rebecca Elliott, Levi Duncan, Keith Forbes, Michelle Miles, Peter Buckingham, or Karen Hill. Many of those people are on. That was your chance. Hearing nothing, I would say that public comment is done and I turn the floor or the mic back over to you, Chair Page.
Okay, thank you very much, Vice Chair Carlson. If there is no objection, we will take a ten minute break and then reassemble at nine twenty eight. I'm sorry, eight twenty eight. So is there any opposition to taking a ten minute break at this time? Okay, Kate, you're on mute.
Oh, I just said it sounds good.
Okay, all right. So a ten minute break. Thank you.
Let's go, Graham.
Hi, Dave. Okay, I call our meeting back to order. Our next agenda item, COVID update, Dr. McLaughlin and Ms. Gomez.
Hi, good evening, board members. Pat McLaughlin, Chief of Strategic Planning for the Division, and I'm here along with Eileen Gomez to give you our COVID-19 status update for June 10, 2021. As the board recalls, we have five stages that we look at in determining the level of community transmission as it relates to how we operate our schools. And one of the levels that the board specifically has asked us to report on each week is the level of community transmission in the Alamo and Charlottesville area. And so I will turn things over to Eileen at this point to take us through the latest updates on that.
Thank you, Dr. McLaughlin. I'm happy to tell you that the, the numbers over the last month or so have fallen and continuing, are continuing to look good. As of today, Alamo County's seven-day floating or moving average of number of new cases per 100,000 people is 1.4. The seven-day moving average of cases has been increasing for the past 13 days, which does not exceed the threshold of 14 days. So this is considered a fluctuating trend. However, I believe these, that these are some of the lowest numbers we've reported. The seven-day moving average for the percent of COVID cases that were positive is 1.8%. This indicator has been decreasing for eight days, which does not exceed that threshold. So this is also considered a fluctuating trend. For the city of Charlottesville, the seven-day floating average as of today is, or as of yesterday, is 1.2. And this indicator has been increasing, although very slightly, for the past 19 days. So this is considered an increasing trend. The seven-day moving average of the percent of COVID tests that were positive in the city of Charlottesville was 1.1%. This number has been increasing for the past 25 days, so it's also considered an increasing trend, but these are also very low numbers compared to what we had throughout the pandemic. We all, we've, in Alamo County Public Schools have had very good numbers. We've only had, reported two cases in the last month. So the cases have fallen a lot in, in Alamo County. And then at UVA, they've had very few cases. They've had two since the end of the spring semester. Our vaccine, youth vaccination rates are continuing to climb. We have an estimated 44.8% of all those in Alamo County in the 10 to 19 age group who are considered, who have had at least one dose. But if you take out the, the 10 and 11-year-olds, that would be 57% of our students aged 12 to 19 have had at least one dose, and 36, almost 37% of our students in that age group have had, are fully vaccinated at this point. Turn it back over to you, Dr. McLaughlin.
Yeah, thanks, Eileen. So, so as you recall, we, we look at the numbers one more way from the CDC core indicators, which look at the total number of new cases per 100,000 people over the past seven days and the percent positivity over the past seven days. And you can see that those indicators are at the moderate level for the case incidence rate and at the low level for the percent positivity that's here. And so that puts us into the moderate range. This number, what we're, what we're tending to see on a seven-day cumulative average is numbers really fluctuating around that, just going over and just going under that 10 cumulative cases in Alamo County each week when they measure it on Saturdays. And so as you recall, what the CDC and the Virginia Department of Health recommend is that we use two figures, or two sets of facts, the level of impact on a school, which we are considering low at this point because of the, the very low number of cases that we are seeing that aren't affecting student absenteeism or staff capacity. And the moderate level of transmission puts us into the lowest level of school impact. We are hoping that this is the, the second board meeting in a row that we've been able to come to you with, with the, the figures that show us in that lowest level of impact. We are keeping our fingers crossed and cautiously optimistic that we will be able to continue to report that our impact remains low throughout the division. And so that is our update for tonight. We'd be happy to take any questions that the board may have.
Do we have any board members with questions?
Just for Ms. Gomez, are we continuing to have vaccination clinics at our schools?
Yes, we are. We, we've had them in, in all, well, in three of our high schools and all of our middle schools. We have not gotten a large participation date, but we think, well, we know kids, parents are taking their students to their physicians because they're administering the vaccine at Pediatric Associates and Piedmont Pediatrics.
Thank you.
Okay. And Ms. Gomez, I have a question, too. You said the percentage of fully vaccinated was, what, 36%?
Yes, estimated to be that.
All right. Well, thank you. Are there any other questions from our board members on the COVID update? Okay, if not, thanks, Dr. McLaughlin and Ms. Gomez.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Our next item on the agenda is a third quarter financial report and update. Mr. Zimmerman.
Can't hear you.
Is Mr. Zimmerman with us?
He was talking, but his.
Yeah, yeah, thank you on mute.
He's working on it. No. Cannot hear you.
Are you saying anything, Mr. Zimmerman? We can see that your screen is being shared, but we don't hear any comments.
We can't hear if he's saying anything or not.
He said he's trying. He's working on it.
Okay, all right. All right, technical difficulties. We'll hold on a few seconds.
And we need to get Ms. Sarah Harris back on. She had the same thing happen where it's like she's not muted. He's not muted. It's just the sound is, is not coming through.
This is what we get for allowing Zen to go not last.
Yeah.
I'm just saying.
Well, speaking of that, should we move, should we do the next agenda item?
Okay, we can do that. All right. Our next item on the agenda while we are waiting for Mr. Zimmerman is, are you here, Mr. Zimmerman? Can you be heard? No. I don't think so.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah. Yeah, we can hear you now.
All right, so I will, I will be using my phone for sound and my computer for the report. Thank you. I'm, my name is Jackson Zimmerman. I'm your school finance officer, and I'm here to present of your consideration the third quarter financial reports. One of the important things, a number of important things to consider with this report, in this particular section of report, we do have March 31 ATM, which is the, the count of students across the fiscal year that we've enrolled in Alamo County schools, and it is 1,033 less than was originally budgeted. Another very important consideration during this financial report is that that has not affected state revenues as it would normally have affected state revenues. There is a whole harmless provision in state funding in addition to extremely strong state revenues that were not initially projected when our budget was adopted in the midst of the pandemic last year. So if we take a look at our financials in terms of revenues, our revenues are strong this year, primarily due to a conservative estimate in state revenues and then also hold harmless funding that was passed by the General Assembly just this past winter. On terms of, of expenses, we do expect our expenses to be less than what was originally budgeted. On terms of of expenses, we do expect our expenses to be less than what was originally budgeted. That's not unusual during this time period, that they're slightly less than originally anticipated. So we will end up with a fund balance at the end of this fiscal year. And then I will, I will move on to the final discussion regarding fund balance. At the start of this fiscal year, we had about a $9.5 million initial starting fund balance. We budgeted the use of just over $1 million in that fund balance when we first started the year. We have some lapse savings. We have additional revenues coming in from the state. We have some operational savings that are budgeted. We did use $2.6 million for a one-time payment made to staff in April that was approved by the board. And that has taken place. We did transfer during the month of April, $4 million of our fund balance to CIP to cover projects that are associated with that. And then we did use $5 million worth of fund balance in the adoption of the budget for FY '22. We do anticipate at the end of this year, we will finish the year with approximately $3 million, a little bit less than $3 million in available fund balance for next, at the start of next fiscal year, end of the current fiscal year. So just wanted to report to the board that we are in a strong financial position. And we are following, we are falling under the 2% requirement for fund balance by the Board of Supervisors. And I'd be happy to field any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions for Mr. Zimmerman on the financial update?
It appears we're looking pretty good, Mr. Zimmerman.
Right.
We are. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Zimmerman, do we need to take any any actions on anything related to your report?
I think the only thing I would be looking for is for the board to receive the report.
Okay, all right. So. That we received Mr. Zimmerman's third quarter report.
Okay.
Okay, moved by Mr. Alcaro, second by Mr. Oberg, that we received the third quarter report from Mr. Zimmerman. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, Ms. Johnston, could you call the role, please?
Mr. Oberg?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Mr. Alcaro?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The numbers always be this good, Mr. Zimmerman. Yeah. All right, our next item is the School Board Salary Public Hearing and Action to vote on that salary. Ms. Johnston, do we have anybody for public comment on School Board salary?
Yes, sir.
Okay. If not, you will recall that we are saying the proposed budget for the School Board then was $7,183 per year with the Chair stipend being 1,800 and the Vice Chair $35 per per meeting that is being chaired by the Vice Chair. Could I have a motion to accept that salary?
So moved.
Second.
All right, moved by Dr. Acuff, second by Ms. Lee, that we accept the salary of 7,183 per year, Chair stipend 1,800, Vice Chair stipend 35 per meeting. Presided over. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, Ms. Johnston, could you call the role, please?
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Mr. Alcaro?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Oberg?
I understand.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. All right, is there any other business by board members or the superintendent at this time?
Yes, I know when we do public comment, we say that we might bring it up in the other business. So I guess I would just want to open it up for discussion on, on should we do anything about the fact that we've done quite a few public comments, almost, you know, 30 something last time, 40 this time. Just what are other board members thinking? I don't want to leave that many comments without saying anything. I don't know if we can do like a two, two by two meeting, Matt, to like find out more information and get a better understanding of what we're doing to deal with some of the concerns. I don't know. I'm open to what, to hear what y'all have to say.
I I guess to me, it feels, I I don't know a lot about the program, but I also feel like it's pretty operational. That's just my view on it, and it follows our anti-racism policy. So that's just my view on that.
My, my, my concern is more with the process. The, the concern that was raised, which I I I can sympathize with, is the fact that the eighth grade curriculum was not on the website because I looked for it and couldn't find it. And I only got it through the graces of Mr. Alcaro. He got it from the, from the school. That was a mistake, and I think we need to own that that was a mistake. I'm sure it was an oversight. I I know for certain it was not some sort of conspiratorial secrecy attempt. But we need to own the fact that, you know, yeah, if we're going to do that, if you're going to put up the seventh, sixth, the sixth and seventh grade curriculum, and say the eighth grade curriculum is going to be put up, that needs to get put up because it does have an appearance of of impropriety, even though I don't believe for a minute that it is improper. I, I welcome the conversations. I quite frankly, am very proud of what Henley did. I think there are things that can be improved, but that's why we have pilots. That's why, that's why we, that's why we do this, so that we can learn. But I'm, I'm frankly, a little disappointed by the, by the apparent allegations that this board is somehow has some sort of malign intent. I, I just, I, I think we deserve better than that. And I know that our teachers and our administrators deserve better than that.
Are there other comments?
I would like to echo Judy, Ms. Lee's comments that we have crafted an anti-racism policy for a reason. And the reason is that racism in our schools does directly interfere with our academic mission. And that unless we are serious about it beyond, you know, training ourselves or educating our teachers, I think we have to have a forum for our students to talk about these issues. They are, it's called courageous conversations because it's not easy. But I, I think, you know, I would like to know more from Dr. Hawes and maybe Ms. Costa at Henley about how the pilot has gone and have more student feedback. But I think that that is probably part of the plan. But I would look forward to hearing a bit more about a bigger picture of whether or what criteria we use if we're going to roll it out more broadly.
And one thing about the, the rollout is, and, and is that I don't even really know when that happened. I don't recall hearing about it ahead of time or know exactly when it started. And so I'll be very interested to hear, you know, what the, with the feedback was on it, you know, once the school year is done.
I, I guess I, since I was the one that brought it up, I don't, I don't, haven't had enough time to think about it. I think I echo what Judy is saying. But with an emphasis being on, I don't know a lot about it. And I think given the amount of comment that we've had from the public, it behooves us to try to find out more about it. And so, Matt, I would, I can reach out to you personally, but I would love to find out more information just because I don't really know, I own that, I don't know a lot about the program. And I, being on the board for a few years, I know sometimes things can be presented in a way that's like, it's, people have different interpretations of things. So because we've gotten so much comment, it's a little hard to like weed out what's fact and what's not. Are you, so like some things were said that were concerning, and I'm like, well, I hope that's not what happened. Like, I hope we didn't tell a parent on Friday that their kid was going to be in an opt-in program on Monday, or she said Thursday, and then, you know, like, you know, I would like to find out. Obviously, if that's happening, that's not ideal. But I am supportive of the, the program, just like Kate said and Judy said. But I need to find out more information.
Yeah. I'm in support of the program, too. And I'm not sure how many board members have had a chance to look at the slide deck that goes along with the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade units. But if not, I would advise you to look at those slide decks and really evaluate them based on our anti-racism curriculum.
And, and in the, and in their entirety.
In their entirety.
What is, what is frustrating is you can cherry pick things and make them seem something that they're not. And I think that, that they're, and that's the, that's my criticism of the fact that it wasn't online in full, that people saw the cherry picked things and went, wow, that's terrible, where is this? And then couldn't find it.
Right.
I also wanted to just, there have been allegations that this, that the children were told not to talk to their parents. And if you read all of the curriculum, that's hogwash. I'm sorry, but that's just hogwash. What it was indicating was that when people share their private things, that you not spread that around the school. And that's absolutely completely appropriate. It should be expected of our children that they not share other children's personal information. But nothing in the curriculum suggested that children should not share with their parents what took place.
Right.
See, that's helpful, or Oberg, I feel, sorry, I, I alter you, calling you Dave and calling you Oberg. That's helpful, Dave, like that kind of clarity around, I know we've talked in the past that when we have a lot of public comments, sometimes it's helpful to get some clarity just around, you know, what is actually taking place. And since I'm.
If you look, if you look at the, the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade curriculum, they all say, let's respect our privacy, you know, what, what takes place here is for us. But it's not to hide it from the parents. It's to make sure that children who are talking about things that are sensitive, keep those things sensitive. Otherwise, kids might say things or be afraid to say things because they're afraid that it'll get around the school.
Right. And again, if you haven't had a chance to look at that slide deck, please do because they are very thought provoking in quite a few areas that the parents mentioned tonight. And the one question that I do have, and this is sort of, I guess, difficult, too. But what's the opt-out policy in relationship to any of our programs? Dr. Haas or anybody?
Thank you, Mr. Page. I would let Ms. Collins speak in more detail on this. However, when it comes to curriculum, parents can opt out from pretty much anything. When they have a disagreement about a topic that's being presented to their children, they can, you know, whether it's a language arts topic or history or a particular book that's being ran in a class, they are entitled to have a meeting with the teacher, discuss it. And the teacher and the school administration are responsible for providing an alternative method for the instruction. And then, you know, it's really just a form of differentiation. So that's our policy for all programming. There are some programs, though, that are, that the state mandates that we provide opt-outs for. And so we also follow those guidelines. Did you have anything to add, Ms. Collins?
I did not, Dr. Hawes. That was exactly what I would have said.
And again, quite really, the entire slide deck of that program is very thought provoking. And again, like Ms. Lee mentioned, it aligns almost, it aligns perfectly with our anti-racism policy. So it would be good then, as I think one of our board members mentioned, to have feedback on what the outcome has been from the program, from Dr. Haas and staff and Dr. Costa at Henley, if possible. So that would be, I think, something that would really help the board.
And perhaps an overview of the timeline as well, like when we would roll it out, other places, just basic information.
Right, okay, yeah, good point, Ms. Osborne. Including going to, what's going to be going to parents and when, so that, you know, we, we have a better rollout. At least people are more aware of it, better communication. Yeah.
Yeah, that would be my takeaway. I wrote down, you know, I like write down the summary, like the, the theme I saw kind of running throughout a lot of the comments was just a frustration with the getting the information, kind of a transparency type thing. I don't, you know, so it's something we can learn from as we go to.
And it's a fair criticism, Katrina. I mean, it was a fair, it, it is a fair criticism. But it's also needs to be placed in the context of we're in the pandemic, we're at the end of the school year. And we have placed a lot on our teachers and our administrators over the past year. I think, I think that we need to, to respect the public's right and especially the parents' right to see the curriculum. But I would also ask that the public grant a certain amount of grace to our administrators and our teachers to recognize that the pandemic has been a huge challenge and that there are obstacles to better communication that exist currently that in a normal environment would not exist.
True.
I would like to just also point out, the majority of the speakers were strong supporters of the program, A. And we had some extraordinarily eloquent students who also strongly supported the program. And I think that, I mean, to come out as, as our, I don't know, Katrina, we had maybe half a dozen students. I think that says a lot about the value that they see in it.
True, that is true.
Oh, I think I'll, I think I'll say a few things now, because I was just waiting for all the board members to speak. So what I'm hearing is that what the board would like is for us sometime in the, in the future, keeping in mind that we have a meeting on the 8th of July. We also have, then we go to our bi-monthly meetings again in, in August, that we would provide an overview of this particular curriculum to the board and, and give background information on it, as well as response from students, you know, on their experience with the pilot. And then talk a little bit about what the plans are for, for rolling it out. So is that, is that accurate?
Yes, yeah, that's true.
I, I will say that we, through the Communications Office, we, we really have scrutinized Dr. Costa's rollout of what she did with the pilot. And while I would say that I can only think of a handful of times over the time that I've worked in this school system where there's been absolutely flawless rollout of anything that Dr. Costa and her team at the school really did do what we ask our, our principals to do and what we ask our, our teachers to do in communicating to families around programming. So while, you know, we can always improve, we can always get better at what we do, I, I want to be sure and make, make sure that, you know, if, again, I always take responsibility. If there's a flaw in how some things rolled out or if people felt left out of the process, then that's not, that's not Dr. Costa's responsibility. She used all the tools at hand, she followed the policies that we have. And so I want to be sure that, that I say that. Having said that, we can always do better, and there's always a way to try to reach families another way. And we're going to continue to, to try to do that.
Dr. Haas, just one more addition to your proposal. One or two people questioned the training or the backgrounds of the preparations of the instructors or the teachers that were doing this. So if you could include that, I would be grateful.
And, and just, and we'll be happy to provide that. What I would say is that, as, as you know, as a school board, you went through several sessions of working your way through Glenn Singleton's book, Courageous Conversations About Race, and engaged in conversations on that topic. And I'm, you know, I'm just going to say that I'm, I'm proud to be part of a, a school board, to work for you, for a board that would engage in that kind of work. And a lot of boards around, around the state and nation run away from this kind of work. And so you, you've rolled up your sleeves and engaged in it. That is very similar to what our teachers and administrators have been doing in the schools throughout the school year. Some schools to a greater extent than others. But what you experienced in, in many cases is, has, is what has been experienced in terms of training with our educators. And I'm also proud to be part of a system that is enacting a policy that, that we approve. As, as some board members pointed out, you know, students worked on that policy. They went around and shared that policy at different groups, such as parent council, student council, all various advisory groups. We had a seat team meeting last week that was publicly advertised for quite some time that any member of our Alamo County Schools community could attend that talked specifically about the topics that, that were brought up tonight. And we had nine people in attendance at that meeting. So there are many, many opportunities to engage, to engage our administration, to engage our teachers, to engage with our students around this work. So we're going to keep providing them. And, and I hope that attendance at these opportunities that are already on the table, without creating new ones, the ones that are already planned to, to share our work, to get feedback on it, are, are there for people to partake.
Thank you, Dr. Haas. Do we have any other school board business, any other school board members with additional business? If not, remember our retreat is tomorrow, beginning at nine o'clock. And also, I'd like to think, because this is the last night, that Leila will be our student rep. She had to leave early, I think, but we do appreciate her serving on the board. And also Maya tonight, tonight would also be Maya's last time. So we'll end up with new student reps beginning in July. So if there's no other business, our meeting for tonight is adjourned and thanks.
Good night, everybody.
Hi, guys.